On the others.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before thee at the commencement of our council meeting. We are thankful for the positions we hold and we ask that thy direction and guidance be with us as we discuss the needs of our community and those things that are on the agenda that we will do it in a pleasing manner, that we'll do it for the benefit of our community, that we'll look at all angles of these proposals and projects and make sure that the things are in place. And this is where we ask for your guidance and direction. Please be with us this evening as we make the decisions that be benefit for the community and we say these things humbly in the sacred name of the Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Welcome Cory and it's too bad there's nobody in the gallery because I think it's gonna be a fairly fun and exciting meeting tonight. There's lots to discuss actually, so it should be pretty good. No delegations will call this meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda? If not, I'll call for somebody to... Thank you. Counselor Drew. Any discussions on the adoption of the agenda? All in favor? Okay. As I said, there is no delegations tonight. Adoptions of the minutes.
I'll do that for you.
Okay. Any discussions on the minutes, anything left out or everything looks good? I checked it through quickly, I didn't see anything out of order too much. Welcome. All in favor of adopting the minutes? Welcome to Star Reporter tonight. Those that was the minutes for the January 4th meeting of the CCW.
February 4th.
It should be February 4th.
I fixed it on the other.
Okay. Yeah. It's March, isn't it? Okay, bylaw and policies, donation policy. There's a backgrounder in your notes on this about dealing with the policy. We've discussed it at previous council meetings and now there's some questions that admin would like to clear up for us. For example, large in-kind donations, what are the issues that are gonna be involved with that? Donations that we share with the county as well. So Jeff, did you want to take a run at this?
Sure. I only had a few minutes to start looking at this, but as I got trying to figure out how to draft this, probably raised a few more questions than anything. And so when we had this discussion, it was on the heels of the Rotary Club request for the golf course waiver. And you were having some discussions about how potentially our current policy doesn't address how we're handling maybe large scale in-kind donations or larger scale donations. And so I just wanted to have some discussion about where, what are those gaps in our current policy and is it simply an amendment to our current policy? Can we do that? And then how's it gonna interact with our other policies that are out there? And with in-kind donations particularly, we had some discussion about, for example, if we're going to waive user fees at the golf course or the ice rink because we're just about to do, are we gonna fund that via taxation which is, it's a bit of a Peter Paul scenario obviously. You're just taking from one to put in the other. Or is that the direction we want to go? There's some implications to that is what I'm getting at. To tax the full value for something we're giving more in kind could be tricky. You know, that could be more expensive in the end, but it would show the exact revenues of all the facilities. I don't know, I just, I got into this and thought, maybe we should have a little more discussion.
So is this more of a bookkeeping thing you're concerned about or?
Not necessarily, it's just how we want to show... How you would like it to show or how you'd like to... So if a resident says, hey, I want to see that golf course get to break even. You just took twenty-eight hundred dollars out of revenue, what are you doing? You can say, hey, no worries, we taxed you for it and put it in the golf course. Right, that's essentially what you've done.
So how's that gonna be perceived though, that's something we need to look at.
There's a political piece to this, right?
Mary, wanna speak to it?
It's really exactly regarding that very concern. And on one hand, we want to manage to give donations as a council for good causes. On the other hand, one is on facilities that are town facilities that really have to balance their books and show revenues and expenses. By doing a donation that has no reflection at all in their books, what we are really saying is that that entity being the ice rink or the golf course had so much less revenue and that's okay. So in other word, it's never transparent.
Unless you're okay with there being less revenue. Although you don't see it anywhere, I, I agree, I understand what you're saying. I can't point to it and say that's the Rotary Golf Tournament value. It'd be in a resolution.
Yeah, it's true.
So is the alternative to tax that difference and add that on to our budget, whatever?
Well, it's maybe...
To me, that's political, not so great politically. Counselor Drew.
So what do we do right now in that situation? How do we deal with it?
So last year with the Health Foundation, we just simply had that much less revenue at the golf course. That's it. And so we had a loss at the golf course, which it was much less than we anticipated and we're okay with that. So we're just, our residents know that they are paying a loss at the golf course. That's, that's what we have to, we have to budget to tax for the loss, that's how we cover it.
So can I just?
Sure.
So is there any way within our budget to ear tag that money and say that this amount of money went in kind to, just so that we can identify for the golf course? So I'm seeing a line on the golf course that says twenty-eight hundred dollars went to...
In kind.
In kind to the Rotary.
Aside from it being, well, good question.
Well, I just curious.
Well, that's what I'm trying to see.
That would make it more palatable for the community, I would think, if we could show that.
Well, if we lose money, then we...
We could show that.
Unless it's more than twenty-eight hundred dollars, we can say, well, here's part of that cause, right?
Counselor Silk.
There's another funny part to this piece though, and I think we talked about it before. One thing we can't put a price tag on is the number of people who come to the golf course, use it under the Rotary Tournament, and then go away and then come back four more times. Because they enjoyed their experience at the golf course. So that's actually extra revenue that we generated because somebody was there for that tournament.
Potentially, and one of the things about having a public golf course, and there's a lot of headaches about having a politically controlled golf course by the way. But one of the upsides is you can use it for other benevolent purposes you wouldn't normally use it for. Not motivate. Yeah.
Counselor Brown?
I was thinking exactly the same thing as Counselor Silk, because there is a, there is another benefit of people coming back. And not only that, they're passing on that information to other people. You know, you need to go down and try that golf course out. And they're coming and they're using that facility and they'll spend some money in town, so I mean...
Well, the goal is to bring people in.
The goal is to bring people in and, and to watch the growth of that golf course. I mean, the potential is many times more than what it's doing right now.
Yeah.
And I, we have to, I think, allow for that. That's my feelings on it.
Counselor Brown, then Counsel, or Counsel Brown, and then Counsel Banger.
So, but we do it with the ice arena, we do it with the pool, we do it with all of our facilities, pretty much. But my thought is that we are being, a word you used was we weren't, the mayor, you said, we weren't being transparent. But I feel like we are because they are coming to council. They are, there is an act, they ask us if they can go ahead and do this and then council, we deny it or we say, yes, let's go ahead and do this. So we are being upfront about giving freebies out when we do it. It's not like we're under the table doing it, which I feel isn't appropriate, but I feel like we're very upfront about these things. Like go to our minutes, you can see what we're doing.
It's publicized.
And these are generally charitable events as well. Counselor.
There's a downside to this also though. How many, how many, how many facilities do we donate in kind or, or whatever per year, per season? I mean, if you open the door, just because you're gonna get responding people coming to the golf course, we'd be opening the door to the golf course three or four times a year saying, hey, we get more out of people coming back and golfing, you know, than, than when in the tournament. There's, there's gotta be a limit to what we, we can do with our facilities.
Well, I kinda look at, well, maybe a little bit different, that we're, we're not here to collect money and sit on a pot of money. We're here to provide services for our people. And charitable donations, which these are basically, is one of the ways we can do it. We, we make the decision for the collective.
But we're not a free institution.
Hey, I was thinking also in response to what Counsel Banger has to say. We, we don't, I think we put a limit on the, the number of times that that facility per year can be used. And I think we just said it's one major per year. So it's not that we're opening up the door, we're just saying, well, the Rotary Club gets it this year, but it'll be another organization another time. It's not gonna be the same consecutive people using it all the time. If they want to do it another time, then they will have to pay that time.
Okay, so I really don't think that we are, that we disagree about the fact that the town has the privilege to give some donation in kind that is beneficial to an organization and to the town afterward. I don't think that's the argument. The argument is more, do we in the books show it for that facility, yes or no? Or are we satisfied that the transparency come by the fact that we have a motion on a table and we are okay if the revenues are less in the facilities that is being granted a charitable tournament or whatever? If that's fine, then let's not worry yourself about. But Counselor Barnes, you're bringing another point. Is there any way, any place in that donation, and I don't remember that there is, a paragraph that talks about how that idea of a large donation would be given not specifically to the same group every year, but could be on a rotation base? Is there something like this in the policy? Because I can't remember reading that and I could be wrong.
We brought it up.
Yep, go ahead.
We brought it up the last time. I don't know if it's in the policy, but we discussed it last time and we said that we would make sure...
About a month ago.
No, longer than that, like a year, exactly. We said, look, we're happy to give it to you this year and then in next year, it'll be somebody else. Because we didn't want one business thinking, once they got it, they were good to go.
Right. But my question is, and answer to that is, is it in the policy? If not, that is what needs to be amended.
Just scanning real quick, I don't see it there.
I didn't see it, I read the policy.
Counselor Silk.
I'm good.
Okay.
Counselor Court, if I could just ask something to that though. I have no problem putting it in the policy, that's easy. Once we kind of determine, well, I think it's pretty simple, but do you, do you wish to take, well, you never take it away because it's your policy, but do you wish to bind the discretion of the council by putting it in policy? Or do you feel the collective wisdom around the table can adjudicate from year to year? That's the other question you need to ask yourself, right?
Yeah, we do elect it to make decisions, so. Who was first here, let's go here, age before beauty or whatever you wanna call it. Sorry.
Do we put a ceiling on the, on the amount of the donation, whether it's in kind or cash?
You, well, the ceiling for cash has been established by your budget. Right, so that, that comes by default. On in kind, you haven't in it? I can see pros and cons to both. You may have something incredibly worthwhile in a given year that would make all kinds of sense to open the doors for. It, I don't know what that is, but potentially, you know, a massive event that needs the civic center and needs the ice rink and needs, you know, all kinds of capacity.
For that reason, I'd like to see it on a case by case basis, Counselor Drew.
I, I don't see any taxpayers clamoring in here saying that we're not doing this wisely. I think it's in a motion, I think we look at it on an individual basis. I don't know that, I don't feel like we need to change anything other than maybe identifying in, in the budget that this year we're giving this much in kind and it's attached to the pool or to the golf course or the ice arena or whatever it is. I don't see, I just, I think we've covered ourselves.
There will be those years where we're doing bigger projects where this may be more important. Other years, we may not come up at all.
Or less.
Yeah. Okay.
So Jeff, right now in the policy, there is something that talks about the discretion of council. So I think we covered those bases then. And so we leave it up to the discretion of council. And that's fine enough then.
One thing I might do though, what I'm hearing is, and I just got some notes here, if it's a policy or if it's literally a, in our accounting system that we can...
That's what I'm wondering.
Track the value of donations, whether they're cash or in kind, year to year, across the organization. So that if, if we wanted to, we could actually report on that quite readily.
Yeah.
You know, each facility, for example, like, like the golf course last year, Alex had a binder. He gave a coupon out for a free round. It went in a binder, here's what it was given, here's the value, and they put if it was redeemed. So he started having really good tracking and, and I keep a binder in my office. If I give someone a voucher for a free family swim at the pool or something, I just keep it in a binder in my desk. But it's very loosely kept, let's put it that way. It's there if we need to reference it, but we're not referencing it.
It's, it'd be nice to keep that around in case somebody says, you haven't, what's the town done for us lately? We can pull that out and say, well, here's what we did in kind, we eat hundreds of dollars or whatever it is.
We'll investigate that a little bit, see if there's some way of tracking the in-kind value on a statement. We'll have to have a look at that.
Okay, Counselor Barnes.
Here's a question, Jeff. How do we deal with the Christmas?
Festival?
The, not the festival, when everybody comes and sells stuff. Bazaar, the market, yeah. They paid to rent the facility, okay?
Okay, any other discussions on this? Clear as mud?
It did clear a lot up, actually.
Good, okay, good.
So that's good. I'm not gonna try and force a policy that maybe we don't.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay, and 6B, something that seems like it comes up on a fairly regular basis for the last however long I've been on council. Land sale policies. You wanna speak to this, Jeff?
Yeah, this one is just, we don't need any conclusions this evening. Last time we talked, we were talking about...
Deposits on land.
Securities when we take infrastructure back after a private developer develops it. And so what Nolan did, there's a table in your backgrounder. We don't really need to look at the policy, just that first table. We contacted most of the folks in the region and asked them that question, how do you deal with this? So if a developer's gonna develop roads and sewer and water and then turn it back over, do you hold security? And I was actually quite surprised.
That don't?
Well, most do. And they, and they're holding between one hundred and a hundred and twenty-five percent of the value of that infrastructure, which is considerable, that's what surprised me. That in some of these smaller communities now, like McGrath and Raymond doesn't. And McGrath just has a small deposit, which to be frank, a five thousand dollar deposit is, you couldn't even dig up and change a couple of ounces for that. But they've kept it very small.
Yeah.
Claire's Home was sixty-five percent roughly, but the rest were a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five percent, which again, quite surprising. So I just wanted to have a little discussion tonight about the appropriateness. And I told Counselor Court and I couldn't make it happen. I wondered about getting some folks in here who had recently developed or are planning on developing.
Like a Mike Schaefer.
What, what would that do if you walked in and said, hey, I'm gonna continue? By the way, you gotta put up a letter of credit worth four hundred and fifty grand or five hundred grand. Would that kill it today? Or the, the fact of the matter is a letter of credit isn't particularly expensive. We have them every now and then, they cost about a hundred and fifty bucks a year. But you must secure them with something, so it ties up your cash. So if you had a million dollars to do a development and we're gonna make you tie up a half of it, you can't do the rest of the development potentially if it is to be mortgaged.
Yeah, that's the problem with a small town.
Yeah.
We're looking, always trying to get more development, we don't have a ton going on. If we throw another roadblock in the way, it scares me a bit on that.
Totally agree, I was just surprised by this, and there's a reason why they're doing this.
And maybe there's a reason, yeah, exactly. There's probably a reason why our neighbors to the east are not requiring a lot, because they're, they want development as well.
On the other hand, we have been bit also multiple times.
Yes, we have.
And, and so, yes, we don't want to discourage developer, but we also don't want to repair...
No.
What I've done at a cost that needs to be now subsidized by the taxpayer. That bugs me.
Well, the things you've been talking about, I agree. Maybe we just need to tighten the rules up on that particular thing as far as you buy it, then you turn around and sell it type thing that, that some of the things that we ran into. Maybe that's what we just need to do, is look at tightening the rules on those a little more, instead of adding an extra hundred and whatever. Any other comments, Counselor Silk?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but I think the bigger consideration is when they develop, if the infrastructure they put in place isn't up to our standards, then it's problematic.
Before, yes. Now, our processes are better, so internally, our processes about the inspections throughout the project and then taking it back are better.
Yeah.
Than they were, so that's a good thing. But we still will incur costs on occasion. If you find things out down the road, when two years later, all of a sudden you got a massive sinkhole in the road and find out that there's a water leak under there, you know, that you didn't foresee.
And we do have roads that were built that are not up to standard and they're still being used.
Yep, we've got some of that too. Other comments?
I think your, your idea of bringing developers is a good one. I think we need to hear from the developers. But we also need to help them understand why we would like to see some deposit, a letter of credit, so that they understand where we're coming from. And I think after, after that, we will have to make a decision on, on, on...
Amount.
The idea of having some kind of security for a project. Depending on the size of the project, it will have to be kind of balanced. Because if you just put a raw amount like this, it might be frustrating a whole project. But it might be a certain amount that is palatable.
Well, if you get a chance to talk to those guys, just find out what they're thinking.
Some past and maybe some that we anticipate and tell them we're looking to develop this together, develop it in conjunction with...
I really think that we need their input.
We have some people in town, I'll use some names here, but Mike Schaefer's probably the next one who'll develop infrastructure that the town will inherit. Don Hall is talking about a little bit, he has a big lot by the elementary school.
Mm-hmm.
Doug Sheen, there's a few guys with tracks.
Is that that place just west of the playground?
Correct, yeah. So maybe we could talk to some of those guys and say, we're looking at developing some policy, but we want input of landowners, potential people that would develop, see if they wanna come speak to us.
Yeah, I mean...
Over the next couple of CCWs, excuse me, we could have some...
I think so. The idea is not to kill development in our town, right?
Okay, I'll start.
Comments on that? Bylaw, policy 6C. This is a request for donation from Carrie Roberts for the sandwiches. We passed this through before, she's, they're requesting two hundred and fifty dollars.
Can I just mention something on that? The reason I brought up the CCW, I know you can't make a resolution. If they need it sooner than later, so I thought, I'm fairly comfortable if you make a recommendation and I'll cut out the check and we'll rat it out later.
I would make a, I would make a recommendation that we allow Carrie Roberts to access the fund for food for the hungry.
Any questions or discussions on it?
I just have a question, I thought that we agreed that we were gonna do a donation like once a year.
Yeah, February.
We did, we donated all the costs of February.
Okay.
And she has come to us, they're a little short in March with their donations, they need another two hundred and fifty. We have a balance of just under eight hundred dollars in the food fund, which is an appropriate use in my opinion. So that's why it's up the table.
Okay. Do we need to have a vote on that recommendation? All in favor of that recommendation?
Thank you.
Carrie? Other business. Fun times. Main Street parking, we've had some, some business owners come and talk to the administration about the size of the stalls, the issues that are involved with that. And of course, obviously, if we widen the stalls, there's fewer, there's fewer places to park. Most, I go up Main Street Monday to Friday, it's usually pretty dang busy, it's pretty packed, pretty good. Saturday, not so much, and Sunday, obviously, not at all. But there are things to consider. I kinda look at it like it's, there's the Walmart parking lot and then there's the Costco parking lot. We need to be somewhere in between there. And so... Do you wanna discuss that a little bit, Jeff, or we just throw this around?
This came up some time ago, and so I just asked Brandon and I said, if we were to mill off all the lines on Main Street and redo them. Because I get a little, I've had some criticism from really one in particular, but I heard from a couple of people downtown saying, you know, vehicles are getting bigger and wider and they get dinged and it's tough to fit. And the current width wouldn't meet our current land use by law if it was new development. It would be narrower than, than that. And so they're saying, how can you violate your own bylaw? Well, it's simply been in place for a long time and that's okay. But then I think you have a large contingent of people on Main Street that would be very concerned about losing stalls. It's, you go down there, go down there right now. If you went down there right now, it would be difficult.
And we had this discussion, if we could commit some merchants to park behind instead of in the, right in front of their stall, there might be more stalls available as well. Brandon's done a good job, if you've looked at the letter there, he's put, the city of Las Vegas is close to ours. Then compare it with the city of Coggi, which seems to have larger ones, et cetera. So they're all, there's different sizes out there. Counselor Brown, you had a...
I think one of the most important people that we talk to are the business owners. I think it's a matter of talking to the chamber, talking to the business owners, getting a letter out saying, you know, Counselor Barnes, you run a business on Main Street, is this gonna...
Counselor Drew?
Counselor Drew, like all of you guys, is this gonna affect you? What are your thoughts on this? And then hearing back from them before we just up and decide what we do. I think it's important that we discuss it with them.
Yeah.
You got dinged.
It's very interesting, being in real estate, I have to have stalls in front of my office. Now, I have a business right next door and has three or four people that work. Four parking stalls are taken and they use mine constantly, plus their own. And it's been something I've been dealing with for twenty-five years, you know? What's the point in getting uptight about it, they're gonna do it. But I, like Counselor Silk had mentioned, we got parking stalls in behind the town here and, and in behind Main Street on the east side, yet those workers, for some reason, don't wanna go out there in the lane.
I can understand why, because sometimes, how do you put it nicely? Sometimes there's elements back there that cause problems. And they, they're much better off as far as their vehicles sitting out, you know, open out front. So I can understand why they do it.
I look at all the bankers.
Yeah, I know.
All the bankers parking behind the bank.
Yeah.
Hall Insurance parking behind their office, but there are some that just refuse to go out back there. I often park in behind because I haven't got a parking stall in front of my place.
Short of encouraging that, I don't know how we get around that, but...
Well, that is my question, is that a... Can you stop? Like, can I say, stop parking in front of my shop?
No.
I don't have that right, right? It's public parking.
Doesn't help.
Yeah, there's a neighborly element to it, but it's not legal on.
No, exactly. So that's why I don't say much. I mean, you can put those little signs up saying this is for, this, 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 but that's other issue.
We've had this discussion multiple times, in all the councils. When we, when we initiated the handy bus parking, we had this discussion. We had some businesses downtown that, that were open at six o'clock at night and consequently, the theater was using their, for their parking stalls. So this is an ongoing situation and I don't think there's gonna be an answer to it.
No, and it's not just our community. There's a new Italian place on Las Vegas and it takes up all the parking spots within three miles. So it's, it's not just our community. I guess what we, I guess you can talk to the chamber and see what they have to say about it, but... I don't know what else. Making them bigger, I just don't see that as an option because it just takes away that many more parking spots.
We lose eight parking spots.
Depends on the size of it, the city of Coggi do seventeen.
So I've had some conversations with business owners. And one business owner who feels that their vehicle gets dinged or it's, they park in between the lines.
Yes.
And that's the way that they do it, right? So that their vehicle is far away from other people. I mean, so I, I really don't know that making them larger is, I mean, it's just gonna, I think it's just gonna make it worse for people trying to park downtown if they're smaller. And I think if somebody doesn't want their vehicle to be dinged, they're gonna park in the middle of the line and that's how they're gonna do it.
Well, I don't think there's any discussion about making them smaller.
You mean straddling the line?
Yes.
Where they park like this instead of...
Which is, which is illegal, by the way.
They can get a ticket.
Counselor Brown?
But truthfully, I mean, I was just at Walmart today and I didn't wanna get my vehicle dinged and so I parked out in outer darkness over there so that I wouldn't be parked up against Joe Blow with the massive, you know, doors that he's gonna swing open in the wind or whatever. So I've been known to drive around the block because I don't want, I mean, I'm just not gonna park right up against you because I don't want my, so...
If you drive a big truck like some of us do, you, you look to not park next to somebody because you're gonna get a ding if you do. Yeah.
Would you, would you like us to engage all the Main Street merchants and request their feedback on their particular blocks? Because we've done it on each block. Say, you know, give us your pros and cons, what you think is beneficial. What we will do is we'll reignite this notion of permitted parking. What we will do is we'll reignite this notion of permitted parking on Main Street, you know, two hour parking on Main Street, metered parking on Main Street, which is fine. We, it's been a few years, Counselor Vanger, since we've had this discussion.
Metered parking.
But, um.
It would be nice if the chamber could encourage your people to park behind their buildings, if they can.
So we could do a bit of a, I could have Sean go up and down the street over the course of a week and drop off letters to all the businesses, talk to them about it. Ask them to send in feedback via email or letter, whatever they like to do. Excuse me, Lisa, will you get some, some further feedback if you'd like to entertain it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Counselor Sal.
Are we gonna ask solicit feedback and then just do what we've always done anyway? I'm just curious.
That's a great question. So that's what I.
Guess we'll see what happens.
Because, I mean, it's a catch twenty-two.
It is.
We can say, well, what do you think? And say, yeah, we'd like to have wider stalls. Okay, so we make wider stalls, you have, well, we don't want fewer places to park, well, then, we're just doing what we've always done.
We'll get the street stretcher.
Drive an old truck like I do, and then you don't care whether you get dinged.
You can do it in Harry Potter.
Anyhow, anything else on that?
Yeah, what's, what's interesting about this discussion is, Jeff, when you said that we'll, we'll put it out there and have the businessmen react to it, it's a lot like our public meetings. We'll probably have five respondents out of, out of thirty. And, you know, the ones that, ones that are concerned.
Well, there's been a concern expressed, so we probably should at least act on it. Yeah.
I, I just, I just think it's being respectful. We're put in by people that voted us, and
Yeah.
Let's let them have a say, let's give them the heads up. If they, if they say they want this, and if we went ahead and, you know, made the bigger stalls, and then if you come to me whining about it, well, I have backup. I can say, well, remember, remember the letter? Remember, we discussed this? Like, it just seems like it gives us a better leg to stand on. We did talk to you, you didn't show up, right? I mean.
And it is.
I'll be there.
You know, really is, Monday to Friday, that Main Street's pretty busy.
Yeah.
Both sides of the street.
Awesome.
I would should be grateful for it.
Absolutely.
The two hundred block particularly. We hear this concern from businesses a lot. I'll get calls saying, hey, I never have open spots in front of my store, can I put a sign up? Well, if we just put signs up in front of, like, it doesn't work to put signs up in front of everywhere. And we have some businesses that are higher traffic, so, well, and you probably hear this from your husband, Home Hardware and Pizza, prices come in a lot. And this time of year, that becomes a problem. November, not so much. April, problem.
Yeah.
Um.
The theater, you see the same theater.
Theater on when the pizza place was there, that was a huge issue.
Yeah.
Um, so we do, we do hear about it a bit, but I'm, I'm not sure that widening the stalls is a solution to that.
Well, there's not a lot of places in behind we can develop into parking. I mean, we do have the, there'll be one here, but people won't.
Park back there and walk, so it doesn't matter.
Yes, just a recommendation then, Jeff. It's okay to solicit their input, and if it comes out, well, we don't want to lose the spaces, or what, then we need to communicate back that said, having done our due diligence, we've come to the conclusion, we're gonna do what we've always done.
Perfect.
I just put my notes, ask her and put in that follow-up.
Sure.
On the letter.
Any other discussion on this?
Saying that the status quo may be the status quo for a reason.
Yeah.
But make sure we communicate that.
Okay.
I guess, I guess the other side of the coin is, we're kind of glad that the Main Street's full.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Alternative would be worse.
Well, we'll take the, yeah, okay. Okay, seven B, AUMAs, Tanya Thornton, I think they'd like to, we need to generate some kind of a, what do we want when she comes here, some kind of an agenda. Obviously, the budget just came out, and we'll talk about that a little bit later on. But we do need some kind of agenda if she's gonna come and discuss, so that's where we're at with that. What do we want on that agenda?
Well.
Uh, but she is requesting an agenda. What I have right now, obviously, is policing, rural policing costs.
Yeah.
Uh, partisan leading of AUMAs, that might not be the final words, but it's what I have. And, uh, the new fiscal framework and what, how they're lobbying and, um, after the budget came out, they, they put a number that they're shooting for to hit on the new, on the new municipal fiscal framework. But that's simply a target, not a set in stone piece, right? So, we could see a precipitous drop-off between MSI today and the new framework tomorrow, and is, are they trying to, to solidify that at all?
Yes.
There is more and more, one aspect that I'm starting to see is the issue of communication between the government agencies and AUMAs that represent municipalities. I'm wondering how, how that communication link is created over there. Because it seems to be faltering. So I'm trying to understand how the government engages AUMA, and at which level, and when. For example, there are policies being developed, and we constantly hear AUMA telling us, but we were not consulted. And I'm trying to understand what's going on here, and why that consultation mechanism seemed to be so faulty.
This has been an ongoing problem, because I remember we'd send letters to the previous government, and we'd never hear from them, nothing.
Correct. Correct.
So. And it seems to be, in a way, continuing, yes.
I think the provincial government's been reading from the Donald Trump playbook.
Well, they're out twittering yet, so we're all following up on what the mayor says.
I'm trying to figure out this red tape reduction thing. Who is doing the consultation? And they're just rattling off all kinds of announcements that they're reducing this and reducing that. Who have they been consulting with? I mean, did they talk to us about this liquor gaming thing? I never heard a thing about it. It was done, right? How many other communities are in the same boat, you know, and, and other things that are going on? I'm not saying that they're bad things.
No.
But I'm saying, like the mayor said, there's a concern. There hasn't been enough consultation.
Well, having spent.
We need to be consulted.
Those of us that spent quite a bit of time in the public sector, understand that consultation is one thing, and decisions are another.
Yeah.
The decision's made, then they consult. That's how I see it, but that, I might be onto much on that.
Well, that's, this is.
It, it's kind of a window dressing type thing, but. Any, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Sal.
I, I think, in sort of answer to Jeff and the mayor's question is, and I, I like what the mayor said, is that part of what we're gonna ask Tanya to address is, how is the communication, what does that look like? Help, you know, educate us so we can understand.
Yeah.
How, how this is working, because we're as confused as AUMA is in how the, how the process is when information's shared or not shared between AUMA, who represents us, and the province, who also sort of kind of represents us.
And when new policies are drafted, where is AUMA in that story? That we don't have the follow-up at our level. And then we see bills, and we don't understand the bill.
It, it seems too often we're getting surprised. We shouldn't be getting surprised like this. We should be having at least some kind of a background of what's going on, but all of a sudden, it's dropped in our lap.
Oh, I think, I think AUMA is confused. They're surprised as well, because a lot of this stuff is happening, and they're like, what?
Well, the current, the current government, not to slam it that much, but they, they have this fifty points they want out in the first year, and, but come heck or high water, they're gonna get it out there, because they promised to, but there doesn't seem any kind of consultation going on with all these things that they're bringing out. That's just my view on it, but, Counselor Brown.
I was just gonna say that, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job.
Counselor Bagby.
What concerns me is all of the, all of the non-consultation with AUMA, what's happening with the other organization for the counties? You never hear them complaining that they're not getting consultation. Why? I mean, don't they have a say in the, in the, in the food chain too? I mean, we need to be, we need to be contacting them and saying, hey, where do you guys sit on this?
I don't know, do we not? ERMA is complaining.
Well, they have a rural association.
That's right, they do.
And so, they are, uh, their association works with AUMA also. Don't think they are totally not linked. They are linked. But their problem is we don't understand their feedback anymore than they understand how we get feedback. And that's what we need to understand.
It'd be interesting when Tanya comes to talk, if, if, if she can let us know if other, other communities are having the same issues we are with this. I'm sure they are. You know, things seem to be happening that we don't know much about.
I've drafted an email to Tanya, so tell me if this is, this is, this is wanting me to tell her tonight. Uh, so, at this point, topics are rural policing cost implementation, political partisan approach of AUMA, new fiscal framework consultation and AUMA partner, participation, sorry. Concerns of the communication between Alberta government and AUMA, how is stakeholder consultation initiated? And related concerns of how to best engage with the province with municipal consultation, red tape reduction in particular.
Yeah.
No, I think that's.
Yeah.
Captured.
Yeah, I think you got it.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be for a full delegation, uh, discussion.
Good. Well, and thank her for taking the time to come, because she has to drive quite a chunk, but we appreciate that.
I worry about long-term, where we're headed. Like, what's the budget gonna look like next year? What are we gonna have for MSI next year? Everybody's just, we're kind of on an edge here. We don't, we can't plan three years down the road, because we don't know
Well.
what we're gonna get three years down the road.
You can plan, it's thirty-seven percent down, I did the math.
Yeah. Well, even, yeah.
Thirty-seven percent down within two years. Two thousand twenty-three, you will have thirty-seven percent less capital MSI and zero operational MSI. That's what you'll get. So zero MSI represent a loss of two hundred thousand dollar, and the
So.
losses that we have from the MSI, well, you can figure it out, is thirty-seven percent of about six hundred thousand.
So the province will look good, and, and the communities will be struggling, because they're downloading everything here.
Feels like we've been on Excel.
Have to do the math once in a while.
I'm frustrated, but.
So, I mean, I've, I've had this conversation sort of with some of you and with Jeff. What I find frustrating is the province is looking for dimes and nickels in the couch, but at the same time, they have municipalities, or like the regional municipality of Wood Buffalo with a seven hundred and fifty-two million dollar budget, who doesn't need the sixteen million dollars they get in MSI funding. So why are you giving it to them? Why are you giving Strathcona County five cents? Why are you giving the regional municipality of Wood Buffalo five cents? Why are you not looking at those ones who have wealthy pots of money and saying, you're not getting a dime anymore?
That's called equitable.
Well, it is, there's a lot of frustration. I mean, Jeff was mentioning yesterday in the budget.
Not fair, but equitable.
We just got stuck with another six percent increase in the education budget. We have to, we have to.
Four.
Four, okay, four point one percent.
On the top?
On top. I don't know if the spending in the education is going up four point one percent, but we're gonna pay more into it anyhow. And those things are very frustrating, because they're, they're just getting, we're just getting dumped on. The communities are getting dumped on. And the, the problems may, may look great, and they're gonna balance their budget, but they're gonna balance it on the backs of the communities that won't be able to balance their budgets. So I'm not sure what's, what they're thinking, but anyhow, there's my rant for the night. Anything else? We got enough for Tanya for next? I can write off one. So.
No, I think that's great, and I will, um, send this to her here in a second, and she'll be here next week.
Okay. Seven C, the Mormon Trail and Chautauqua.
Mayor, I'm gonna put you on the spot on this one.
Okay. The Mormon Trail and Chautauqua is an interesting kind of organization that has had its growing pains. And, um, the good news is that there is, in that organization, about thirty-seven thousand dollar left that belonged to the four communities, so McGrath, Sterling, Raymond, and Cartston. So that is good. There is money there. What the group wanted to know, we now understand that Chautauqua is not an experiment that we especially want to, uh, we, we ignite, except maybe for some component of it as a talent show and maybe one or two element of it that could be done at a different time of the year. What the group really wants to know is, what is the focus for the Mormon Trail? Should the name be kept? That was what the Badlands consultant had told us, that that should be the name, and not to dilute the brand. They had told us that. So, the question is for Raymond in particular, they are interested to link hands with, uh, could, not could. Riding on song, et cetera. Milk River, that region, that has difficulty marketing themselves from a tourism perspective. And is that the idea that we want to be part of something like that? A larger umbrella for the region? We all have, from a tourism perspective, different needs, and for example, Raymond has decided that their destination would be sports.
Family sports.
Sports destination tourism, sports tourism. That's what they call themselves, sports tourism town. So they're really focusing all their energy in attracting events to their town that way. Uh, McGrath has the irrigation canal and a walkway through the town. The, uh, Sterling has the pioneer kind of village and, and the first stop to the pioneers that build the canals. We, on another hand, on the other hand, have a different type of tourism. We're more like, uh, a springboard for tourism that comes here.
Or a gateway to different places.
To, to go, yes. We're not really a destination per se, except for the golf course, possibly, for those who come to play golf or mount all that. But in general, we are more a town where tourists will come, will stay a couple days, and travel somewhere else. So what do we want to do with that? Do we want, first of all, to carry on putting ten thousand dollar into that organization? Do we want to, uh, keep that brand? Do we want to be part of that brand? Or do we rather go solo? Or do we look at that Mormon Trail with the optic of, what we truly need is a decent website where each community can put all their events in order to attract people to the communities. Now, that was discussed and seemed to be a difficult feat, unless you have somebody that call every club in each of the town and create that calendar, which the clubs don't want to do, even in our town. So that is a labor-intensive kind of position, but that could be fueled by some dollars from each community. So is that what we want? That, the discussion is here.
Go ahead.
Yes.
I'm having a trouble with Mormon Trail period, and Chautauqua in particular.
No, but that's dead, so don't talk about that.
Well, is it dead?
It is.
It is.
It is.
Now, the problem I have with, with Mormon, with Mormon Trail is the fact that, is it gonna be called Mormon Trail? And, uh, you're never gonna get a church involved in Mormon Trail.
The churches should not be involved in this anyhow. Mormon Trail, to me, is more of a historical thing.
Initially, uh, uh.
We had Marcus, yes.
Yes, I understand that.
We were going to initiate little placards.
Yes.
And it was gonna go on the Mormon Trails.
Right.
All the way along, so that you could go out on a Sunday drive and go here, and here, and here, and here, and so forth. And that's, that's why that come to pass.
But was the church interested in donating to that kind of thing?
At one time, the church was interested in putting, but they went away.
Yeah.
You know, when they started to expect, look at the expense.
So.
So now, as far as Cartson is concerned, we have more people coming. we have more people coming to our campground and coming to our community in the evenings and so forth because of the shows. And so do we need to look at that, the community theater and the, and the carriage theater?
And the temple.
Right.
I think that's out there now, at least as far as the theaters go. I mean, it's pretty well attended all summer long. We do have a, there is definitely a cultural connection with those other towns that I think we need to maintain. But we all have our own interest in how we can attract people to our towns. We're all, we're all trying to get the dollar to come here. And we do, we are different than the other communities in the fact that we are a gateway to the crown of the continent. We're actually in a kind of, in some ways, it's very enviable. In some ways, we're a little bit too far from Lethbridge. But talk to anybody about scenery, they'll always talk about this area here. You'd comment their.
I was going to say, we, I think we've got more representation than we need and I, I, we, we have to look at the effectiveness of the Mormon Trail. Do we want to spend that kind of money? We have Southgrove and Southwest that I think effectively represent us very well. And they're, we're always being updated as to what's happening for, and what's, would be of interest for our area and promoting our area. And I, I think they serve us well, both of those groups. And I, since we've been in the, the Mormon Trail thing, and the Badlands, another one. I haven't seen a lot there because.
Badlands is going to be up for discussion with all the communities down there.
Totally different, yeah. But the Mormon Trail, you know, like you said, the Chautauqua is dead, the water. It never really took off here in town that much. Just for some reason it didn't.
Yeah.
He wanted to talk.
I think that possibly an avenue we could go is to discuss where do we fit in this with the theater groups, right? You know, do you want to have this synergy with McGrath and Raymond? Are we okay just standing on ourselves, on by ourselves? And we're right. When we talk about, you know, we are different and we have lots of tourists coming through town. It's getting them to stop. And, you know, I agree with councillor Bingeri that there is a number that come to the campground because of the theater. There's a number that come just because they want to stay here and travel to Glacier and.
It's a beautiful campground.
It's a beautiful campground, so they want to come and stay and then they use this as a wheel to where they're going. I do have a question if I could. You talked about markers. Aren't there markers out there already that's consulted?
There's some.
There is some.
Pioneer Trail or whatever.
Dale, Dale Lowry did quite a few markers.
Some of them are, I think a lot of them are privately done though. I don't know how many of them are actually publicly done.
Yeah, I don't know.
I have a few out there that mysteriously lead you to the other side of the border where you can get arrested because you.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
You crossed at a non-border cross.
Whiskey gap.
So Jeff, is there something that I missed?
I didn't have a script, so I'm not sure. But, you know, we, we, I've gone to the last two meetings. I haven't attended a Mormon Trail meeting in three years. But they asked me to come to the last two meetings because it started here in Cartston. It's where the idea kind of started out and I'm, I'm a little disillusioned with where it is today. I have an opinion on this whole thing and I think that, what I recommended to the group was that the Mormon Trail, I think, can still exist as a historical interpretation initiative that can be shared between all the communities because we all have those roots. And there is a segment of traveler and tourist and, and even just community member that that really appeals to. And it might be simply an initiative that sets up a, a series of markers with an app that supports it to take you from marker to marker and learn about these things. And you capture that visiting friends and relatives market, which is our biggest market because of now, visiting friends and relatives. So if you can keep them in town for another day because they have another activity to do on a Sunday, which is pretty quiet around here, that's a good thing. I'm struggling with it as a tourism. Well, the tourism, the marketing, what's the word I want here, a scheme anymore. So I'm just not sure it's working.
Is viable.
We put it out there. We've had tourism operators who have tried to work under that. It hasn't really stuck. We don't have anyone clamoring to say, hey, what's the Mormon Trail doing? I need to run my marketing campaign under that banner. We're not getting that feedback. So I go back to, this originated as a historic interpretation initiative that would drive the cultural explorer, the personal history explorer and visiting friends and relatives market in the community. And it was a bit capital intensive, but operationally almost nothing. And so that was kind of one of the other side benefits is that it didn't cost us a bunch to man a whole lot of things either. I think there's still some merit there, but that isn't the same opinion across the committee.
Not at all.
That's, that's the cultural connection I was talking about. We should do without, be able to do without too much money. Take a, a germ or somebody that can put together a great website and a great map and all these spots around it, within the little communities around here and put it together. That was my idea as well. It was more of a historical thing than it was a, anything else, yourself.
So then Jeff, you could have markers. Wasn't there like an Old Jefferson store or something like that where people who want to know what the historical elements of this entire area are that, as it relates back to church history? And then maybe there's some of them that want to know where all the graveyards are so that they.
Well, just as an example, as you're mentioning, I was looking for the Caldwell graveyard, for example. It's in the middle of a cow field. Now, if there was a marker somewhere that could tell you where it's at.
There's a rock.
There's a rock in the middle of the.
Big rock right on the side of the road. It's got a nice fence around it.
I had to climb through two passes to get to it.
So it's there because I've looked at it.
That's what I'm thinking is that kind of a cultural connection. If we can get somebody to put up a, maybe it's going to cost a little bit of money to put up. With the communities putting together some kind of a, an app, a website, whatever you want to call it. The only issue is to put up these plaques because I think most of the plaques that I see have been put up by individuals to a large degree.
All right. So if that is something you wanted to attain, there is a cost to all that. Right now, there's thirty-seven thousand dollar, but that doesn't fuel a lot of activities. So their proposal was at one point a dollar per capita into that organization. Is that something we're still willing to entertain or not? This year, we don't have it in the budget because we have that money in the bank, correct?
I just have a bit of a thought on that. I'm not crazy about per capita, per community at this point, but I think if we were to set up a framework of, here's maybe how the Mormon Trail could continue and whatever you as a community wish to contribute, build it out. Build it out in your area, build it out in your region. I mean, we could, we could have fifty markers within just a few kilometers of Cartston that can tell a story. Now, it takes a lot of work, a lot of doing, but it's a wonderful project to engage your historical societies and your other groups in town to contribute to.
You know, I was in Lethbridge today and Raymond has the same thing. You walk down their main street, this old building explains who was there.
Yeah, I like that.
Up and down the Lethbridge. I was reading them all the way up and down as I was wasting time.
I like that.
But those kind of things is what I, what I'm envisioning as far as the Mormon Trail goes and the markers that we could have around here, councillor.
No, I was just going to say, I'm not, personally, I'm not interested in spending any more money that goes towards this. I do not support the idea of per capita. I think that is, I, I just don't want to do it. I just think it's too much. I like the idea of what you suggested of a smaller and billing it out within the communities and seniors getting involved and the historical society, all of that, I think is a better channel to go versus, I think if I, if me as a councillor want to spend money on tourism to Cartston, it's not going to be that. I'm, I'm thinking bigger. I'm thinking golf course. I'm thinking, you know, temple. I'm thinking campground. I'm, it's just, I, it's just different. I just.
But I'd like to see some kind of, we, that we maintain relationships with those people because they're, they're all the same. Aside from hating each other in basketball and football, I'd like to see some other kind of a, more of a cultural connection, a brand, a.
The consistent brand between the four could be a good thing.
That's what I'm, that's why I think a really nice app or something like that, that's not going to be overly pricey, that we can stay connected with the guys from Sterling and everybody else in between.
An app is a good thing, but all of these tourists that are coming into town, they're coming in, into the, the visitor center or they're coming into a, a business or something like that. My, my preference is just to have a, a little pulled out map that just has, you know, the communities and this is a site that you can see along the way. I mean, down the states, you can find those on, on the historic Mormon Trail. All the way across, they've got those little maps and you can follow it and they have big signs, the arrows, it's so, so many miles to this point and whatever. But it can be done, but I, I think you need more than just an app.
There's a market out there. I know with the historical society, the hits we get on just that little websites into the thousands upon thousands upon thousands, people are looking for things. So to have them just come into a, people are planning a month, six months ahead where they're going. They want to be able to find online what they're going to do.
All right. So if I need to report back to the group, what I'm hearing is that you want to preserve the Mormon Trail kind of brand, but you want each community to be able to do their own things regarding how to promote their own area without having to be linked to other areas. Is that what I'm hearing? Tell me, ye or nee?
Well, we're not interested in fourteen thousand a year anymore to whatever it is.
So you want to spend, so you, you want to spend the money that is relevant to your own community and do it your way, but be able to report to each community what the projects we have possibly. Would that work?
And keep the brand consistent so it ties us together. I think that's.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
We don't want all these split four different ways.
So in other words, we wanted to still be focused on historical interpretation. And we want it to be at the community level when it comes to development of that brand.
There are a lot of.
That's what we want. Okay. So, and we don't intend to spend any more money into that. Okay, fair enough. No, that's, that's good. So if we understand where we're going. So in other words, if we are there, what happened to the thirty-seven thousand? That we're looking at developing a website. Do we want to? There is a website, but it is redoing. It's really not good the way it is right now. So do we want that? Personally, you would rather not.
But there's got to be some way of putting things out there to people.
Because the website never was kept up.
That's the issue with them.
And it was, the data never was transmitted to whoever was the person fitting that thing. In other words, it was rather totally irrelevant and, and not very useful. So maybe we would have a position, forget about the Mormon Trail website?
Is there any way that we can get some of that money back?
Oh, yes, yes.
That was thinking.
We just finally got a reconciliation. Let me tell you, that was no small feat.
That was a misery.
I think that we should try and get some of that money back and.
Yes, okay, along with what councillor.
Okay.
So is that on a per capita basis or is that split four ways?
Split four.
I thi, I think.
Yes.
I think.
Do you want me to explain that?
Well, it's a little bit more complicated because Sterling never paid as much as the other three communities. In other words, it would have to be kind of divided within a proportion Sterling paid.
Proportions and proportions.
Yeah, we, we do know.
That's the key.
We, we paid ten thousand into it and that paid three thousand into it. Anyways, there is a mathematical formula that we can devise.
So you can divide the turkey up on.
Yeah, we'll give you the drumstick.
Sterling gets the drumstick.
They get the neck.
Okay. All right. So I appreciate your comments. Thank you so much because it gives me a better idea what to report.
Like, just kind of a vision I have. Maybe we can work with our county on this even. I, I drive, now that I'm retired, I get a chance to drive around quite a bit and do this and that and everything else. And like, you, you drive by a place like Bees or others, beautiful country. But if you don't know where, for example, their cemetery is, that's a historic cemetery. We need something up on the road that says, okay, here's what it is and this is what happened.
Have a sign or something.
Somebody's put a sign up there, yeah, but it could be bigger, it could be better.
I mean, I agree.
I don't want, I don't want us to just say, well, that's it, we're done with all this stuff, but.
I agree with you. There are many, you go to Delbonita, how would you have known that there was, that was such a thriving hamlet?
That's my concern is that's why I like to keep these cultural connections with the other communities and the counties going, but anyhow.
Okay.
Whiskey gap in there.
Yeah, well, that's another thing. Taylorville, my husband always wants to know, where is Taylorville? You go through it and you hardly know.
Take him right to the cemetery.
They're all in the cemetery there now.
That's right. Okay, any other discussions? Madam Mayor, you got what you need from us on that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Seven D, Bill Two, the proposed bill on prohibition and alcohol sales.
If you don't mind me saying something. I appreciate Emily Scow calling me before the bill was released, but I honestly release, realize that maybe his information was not as accurate as it could have been. Once we read that those changes, who can be combining very rapidly once it receive all readings, we are full of questions and with Jeff, we kind of had a good conversation and Jeff kind of had put down many of his concerns and I had my concern and many are similar. We still have a little bit more we like to address yet. You want to go ahead with it?
That, that was a bit of my frustration as well is that maybe our M L, not just our M L A, there's a lot, there's a lot to digest here. And maybe he wasn't quite as on top of the books as he maybe could have been. Yeah, go ahead.
I talked to Joseph yesterday, I believe, and I told him, I said, I said, I appreciate you told me that section fifty-four was being rescinded, but you failed to mention that fifty-six through seventy were being totally changed. That changed things dramatically.
Yeah.
Once we know, it's one thing to say that the prohibition piece was going away, well, then it just. On the first application, no problem. But that's not what it's saying on it. So I, I didn't get this. I was able to download it last Friday afternoon when they put it up on the ledge site. And as I've gone through it, I thought, I'm not exactly sure how this is supposed to, how it will play out in actuality. I think I can understand how they intend it to play out, but I'm not convinced that's how it's actually going to play out. And so I just went through this, this afternoon and put some of my thoughts. So what Joseph said, sorry, getting back to that is, him and I had a good talk about it. He said, would you, after your council meeting, send me your comments on this? Because I need to go meet with the ministers before there's any more readings. And I said, well, how long does it take for a bill to pass through the ledge? He says, could be two days, could be two months. I have no idea. And so I said, well, once, if I only have twenty-four hours, phone me like right away. And I haven't heard from him, so I'm hoping that means we have some time. I, I get what they were getting at here. I'm just not a hundred percent sure if they've thought through the ramifications of this. And so you may or may not agree with my questions or concerns, but do you, do you want to go through them quick, councillor, just?
Please.
After the section.
Yeah, we could, we could do each one if you like.
Well, you should take time on this one. It's going to be a big impact on us.
The thing when I, when I think about this one and liquor licenses and everything that goes with all of this stuff, we've already been legislated that we have to have cannabis in town. If somebody actually wanted to put a cannabis building in there, they could find a spot outside of our bylaws, we would be obligated to have that in town. I kind of see we're going the same kind of direction with this. Somebody's going to come along and say, okay, I want to have, sell, I want to sell wine or whatever in my store. We will not have a leg to stand on. We will have to, and they say it's up to, to, to the council, but if we reject it, I think they're going to nail us with a lawsuit. That would be my view.
I think we're open for litigation on a couple of areas.
Yes.
Because it's unclear to me where you as a council simply now got your authority to determine what type of licenses should or should not be distributed in the community. Nobody else in the whole province has that authority.
Okay, so.
Not even a licensed city gets that authority. So it's odd that you do.
I found it interesting also, just a second here, that our, our previous M L A, who was the red tape guy, is just flogging booze in, in the provincial parks now. And I was kind of surprised to me. In my mind, that, that's the direction that this government's pushing us as well. It's going to happen.
I'm surprised that he didn't consult you first.
Yeah.
There, there is a consultation piece, but there is also, in my mind, another piece where six years ago, we had a plebiscite that was so clear. six years ago, we had a plebiscite that was so clear as to the intent of the citizen regarding the distribution of alcohol period. So to have a bill like that, that puts it up to the communities to regulate alcohol in their town in southern Alberta, makes very little sense. Why then was, if that intent is what you're saying, what is, why is in the government just say prohibition is repealed, period? And then it put us in a position where the first applicant would trigger a binding plebiscite. And that would have been the preferred option for our town, but that is not the case here. The case is, first application will come here, we will send it back to the commission board, and then they will send it back here, where we will have to make a decision on whichever license most likely, imagine that it is a liquor store that applies, and that could well happen in this town, because that was spoken of years, years back. So we have that application now, that opened the door for all sorts of things. Casinos, restaurants, lounges, you name it. All will be able to come to town. You won't be able to stop nothing. So that is my word with this legislation, is that the minute you open it to one, is open to all the five types of licenses that exist right now. You will not be able to restrain the license, and that we know because we did the research six years ago, and we know that to be the case.
Well, right now, I think there's an economic component to say a liquor store. I don't believe, there's a reason why Tim Hortons isn't here. And I think you'd see the, find the same thing with the, I don't believe personally that a liquor store is waiting to get into Cardston.
I do believe that the class B licenses, that, that's, to me, is what's probably gonna happen more than a liquor store. But you're right, once we open the door to one, we can't stop the other.
No.
And I guess my question is, and I don't know if this can be answered or not, if somebody makes an application and we turn it down, do they have a legal stand to come after us? And are, is the government gonna say, well, get into the twenty-first century, you're gonna have to have liquor there? I don't know.
So is there a, is there a possibility in the legislation that we can do what we did with cannabis? Designate areas and so that they can't have them in those zones at all?
And that's, that's down all across the province. Every community has under their land use bylaws setbacks.
So, so that's kind of what it's looking to me, like the only way we're gonna be able to control it.
Well, you absolutely correct.
Well, our discussion yesterday is if we have a cannabis, and if you have a liquor store, it'll be up there in the, in the northeast part of the industrial park, 'cause that's the only place that's gonna be far enough away from everything else.
Yeah.
Land council designated land use for cannabis.
Well, we did.
That's what our options were.
Setbacks, yeah. And it'd be the same with, with a liquor store.
We had a choice of a hundred and fifty or three hundred feet, right?
Counselor Brown.
I was just gonna say, are we gonna go through this? Cause if, if we're gonna go through this, rather than, rather than just all of this, if we are gonna go through this, let's go through it and then we can discuss each area, or are we just gonna discuss it all at one time?
Well, part of it is, we are discussing it, maybe we're just throwing it out there, but yeah, do you wanna take this and go?
I'll lead us through it quick. The first section fifty-six basically says, if there's no license premises, the board, and so it needs the A G L C board, refer the application to the municipality. You then would have ninety days to refer or advise the board whether you approve of the license. Now, where this is problematic is, how are we evaluating these things? I don't think they're giving us jurisdiction to distinguish between classes of license. So for example, do we wanna license our golf course? Well, maybe, but that doesn't mean we want off sales, you know, for example, right?
Yes.
So I'm not sure what criteria other than we just think this person's nice and they're a good applicant, and we don't want the kickback, and that's how we evaluate it. It seems problematic. And then I said, does the municipality have the authority to discriminate approval based on the type of license? Which we learned when we were looking at the plebiscite, we could not control type of license by bylaw. So we asked the province, if prohibition goes away, can we create a bylaw to control type of license? And they said, no, you don't have that authority, 'cause you're the municipality, not the A G L C. Then the next one, must we create policy which guides decision-making, and if so, under what authority would we justify a bylaw? What gives us the authority? Cause it says in some of the preamble that the municipality, in the briefing to Joseph, that the municipality can control by bylaw. And I said to Joseph, I don't think we can. At least that's not the previous discussion we had. And then, is the ability to approve or disapprove of a liquor license what's called ultra-viruses to the local municipality? Meaning, we didn't have the jurisdictional authority to make that decision, and so we can be legally liable for making that decision. So the scenario is, liquor store applicant A comes in, council turns him down. Actually, as we get later in this, it says you can't entertain another application for three more years. So three years later, we decide, we've been waiting three years, based on our own decision-making, has to wait three years, that we wanna license the golf course, for example. So we do. Well, now anybody can come in, first of all, but also we've opened ourselves up to potential harm from applicant A returning down, causing business distress or, you know, all that stuff, so I'm just concerned where that authority comes from. And then I found it interesting in section four, that if we simply don't advise the board of our decision, then they don't approve the license. So if you just sit on your hands and ignore all applicants, then no one's approved. I find that a weird legislative clause. Normally, you have to act, either positively or negatively, but you have ninety days with which to respond. But in this case, it says, if you don't advise the board of its decision, then they don't issue a license, which I feel like you're opening yourself up to liability by not acting. So if you got sued and the judge said, you never told them either way, you just said nothing. So where do you stand? Take a position so I can judge on it.
Yeah, exactly.
So I can rule on it. Take a position, right?
Yep.
And then it talks about, if, and what would that be for? Be the board, so if we don't say anything, or we say no, then the board may not issue a license or accept an application for a license that would authorize the license premises. For three years from the date, the board referred the application. And so I found this interesting too, because what they're saying is you as a council can bind them. You have the ability to bind them, which you've never had that luxury before. We're always subservient to provincial legislation. I, I can't think of other examples where we get to bind the province by telling them they can or can't do something. That's, we're the children of their legislation, right? And maybe they're gonna do that, but there's no defined mechanism for obligating the board to make a decision, and if the applicant can be turned down, it appears no one can apply for three years. So it just takes away some of that. And then at the very end, it, it just goes through some of that, if you just had a plebiscite on the application before this new legislation comes into place, they'll honor it for three years, that stuff. And then, what Counselor Selk said, when cannabis legalized, we were told we did not have the authority to prohibit.
That's right.
You had, you could use land use planning to keep it from certain areas, but you could not have a blanket prohibition. That was explicit across the province. Under the same act, they're telling you that you have the authority for blanket prohibition.
Yeah, it's confusing.
And it's the same act. So I'm not sure, under what they rewrote there, where that authority came from. It, it's odd to me, but maybe they feel it's very, very solid. And is it correct that once an application type of any type is approved by council, no further applications will be referred to the local council? So once you approve one, then your role is done in this process, which isn't necessarily a bad thing if you've approved one. But if they would give you discretion over the type of license, and then it would have to come back if there's an application for a different type of license, that would be something, it would be of more benefit to the local community, in my opinion.
Yeah.
But that's not what it says.
So do you get a feeling that they're just kind of filling this, as they go along?
Yeah, I do.
My experience in this tells me that there's nobody at the Department of Finance that actually understands the legislation, 'cause they've said that to us on a number of occasions before, that this is unique and they've never studied it and they don't know, there's no precedent for it, right?
Yeah.
And so they can't say how it would be ruled.
Historically, you can see how the government acts, like many, many years ago, with, with the Sunday closing of stores and it had to be a certain size, et cetera, et cetera. Eventually, that went to the courts.
Yeah.
And the courts went away, and I, and I see the exact same thing happening here.
That's why I, I keep on going back to this zoning it out, so that, to me, that's the safest way for us to keep it out of here.
But, but you won't keep it out right now.
No, no, people can, people can, people can go buy liquor and bring it into their own homes.
What I'm saying is, a cannabis retailer could apply and open here next week.
Yeah.
But only in areas that fall outside the setbacks.
That's what I mean. So there's very little places in town.
Gas co-op, west industrial, east industrial, they can open up there.
Mm-hmm.
And we can't stop that.
But with alcohol, it's been mentioned, a, a place like Extra Foods would be within their rights to try and open up a store there. And I don't know if there's a lot that we could do about it, but once the legalities are all kicked through.
So I am really wondering if we shouldn't add something to questioning why there was not a general repeal of the prohibition? Because it would put us in a position where the public would have an input.
Exactly.
Somebody could ask Joseph, I guess, I don't know. Counselor Brown?
Well, and what, on what the mayor said, and why, there's, it's not like there's a million communities that this is speaking to. There's very few of us. So why weren't we discussed in it, right? Like, why, why, why was it not brought out to us so that we could have cleared this nonsense up before it gets built into this?
Particularly when the associate minister of red tape production.
Lives here.
I don't wanna talk about that right now, but it just seems ridiculous to me.
It's not like it's a stretch.
Something else I found interesting here, and I don't know how the province handles this, they said something about Indian reserves, that's a federal responsibility. So I don't know how they could say that, I'm not sure. They did say something about you can open up on Indian reserves right now.
But it was before also.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay. But that's not really a provincial responsibility.
Yeah, no, but.
Federal, yeah. I don't know.
Either way.
To be continued, I guess. I don't know where else we go from here.
If you're comfortable sending this and any other thoughts to Joseph tomorrow, he would like our feedback.
Yeah, that's good, and I think.
And I told him I'd have it on the agenda, and we, we put something together for him.
I think you've covered the questions very well in here. Anything else you could add to it?
But we, we added something.
Could we ask Tanya to sort of?
Oh, she would not know anything about it, no.
Is it only deals with the county of?
It's Cochran.
Bylaws.
Yeah.
It's unique.
She won't know anything about it.
Yeah.
So there's the communities and the parts.
Cardston County, McGrath, Raymond, Glenwood, Hillspring.
Called the Cochran.
Sterling's not involved in it?
Municipality, municipal district is Cochran.
Yeah, Sterling is. I was thinking of Warner, they're, they're outside of that. So yes, there's seven.
Counselor Brown?
I think the only thing I would just add to, to it is our frustration that we were not consulted on this. Cause you would think theoretically that we would, this would have been pitched to us, that we would have been able to stop, make the process a little more streamlined and a little smarter. If, if it is all about reduction of the red tape, why in heavens weren't we a part of it? For the love, end with that.
When the impact is acute to seven people in the same region, why isn't there a location where it takes?
Yeah, yeah, sure, for the love.
And I guess my question might be as well, if, if the county of, Carson County allows this, because I know there's a push in the county for a micro brewery.
That's right.
Does that affect the rest of us then?
If each municipality has.
As it's all autonomous autonomy.
Um, we've had that cleared up on a number of occasions, but, I mean.
We asked Joseph last time.
Certainly, once one diamond starts to fall, it certainly makes it difficult for the rest, doesn't it?
Yeah, a hundred percent.
I mean, and Raymond also has an applicant.
Yeah.
Well, there is a private member's annual license, which is already allowed. And let me clarify that, 'cause the mayor asked me this. Even under the old legislation, event licenses and private member licenses were always outside prohibition. That's why your leagues are licensed, it's why the dark club in McGrath is licensed, it's why.
The Fraternal Order of Beagles and Raymond.
Yeah, Fraternal Order of Beagles can be licensed because it's going to be for their members on an annual basis. So that's always sat outside prohibition.
And they finally caught up with us, you're building a Dairy Queen down there next to the Fraternal Order of Beagles.
Yeah.
So anyhow, can we move on? Anything else on that?
Yeah, I think I've got the comments, and I'll send that to Joseph in a minute.
Strategic priorities preview, is there anything on there that needs to be discussed?
I didn't have any specifically, it's just part of this agenda now.
We do know there's the big meeting coming up, we'll get that out there as much as we can, did we get a chance to see the big poster you brought? They all saw that.
No, mine's a different thing.
Oh, no, on that, we've got our rec center open house that's happening. We've got posters going up. So if there's any businesses that Counselor Selk or myself hasn't gotten posters to, let us know, 'cause we'd love to smear as many posters up and down Main Street. We wanna get it on in, in the newspaper, Channel Thirty-two, we want it everywhere. The more people, the merrier. We wanna hear if you want a rec center, because we're at that make and break point. Counselor Selk and myself did go today into a seniors rec center in Lethbridge called Bridgeland.
Norbridge.
Norbridge.
Oh, yeah.
Norbridge, and it was fantastic. I wanna be fifty-five already, because it's so cool. It's just, I'm years away from that, be sure to put that. But I just, it was fantastic. Like, it was, we, we just got so much information from them and we're, we're excited to see what we can do. So we invite you all to just spread it like wildfire.
One concern I have is, I hope that, I hope I'm right on this, is this venue gonna be big enough? And if it's not, is gymnastics still gonna be going on, is it gonna be set up?
I think, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, we think the theater house will be set up by then. So you'd actually have the theater seating in the gym.
That's my only concern. I hope we have four, this might be hard to get four hundred people stuffed in here.
Potentially, you'll, like I said, you'll have all the theater seating set up on the.
Bring it.
In there, so we could just throw a microphone on stage there.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, if we are under question.
I think Counselor Selk had something still on this one.
Oh, did you have something, sorry?
Under economic development and tourism.
Mm-hmm.
There's in it, we have a partnership with Community Futures on our study for the trade corridor.
Right.
Their fiscal year end is the end of this month.
Oh, is it?
They would like to be able to invoice and disperse any funds for that study. So if we don't hear from the CARES grant, I would suggest that we move ahead with this and get it going.
So should we just send them an invoice anyway for the amount in the resolution? Or do you want us to give it a couple of weeks and see how it plays out here?
I suspect that they're going to want to have an invoice from the contracted.
Oh, I see, I see, okay.
Person doing, the contracted company doing the study, and then they'll pay them directly. I suspect that, but I'm not sure.
We're the, the invoice, we're the one that's contracted the company.
Yeah, anyway, Jeff, if you can talk to.
Can we talk to Tony?
Yeah, talk to Tony, because we do either, and I will say from a personal point of view, I'm tired of dithering on this. Can we get going?
CARES will announce.
Yeah, but, but we also have a contingent in here in our budget that we will pay for it, right?
Um, I think so, sounds right.
This is a fake.
Time to write the check.
Right. So award the contract, write the checks, and let's giddy up.
Get the saddle on and get going.
The only thing I have to check on that, and I don't know, if it's like some of the grants you cannot proceed until.
You have their money, yes, that's right.
You disqualify yourself. I'll have to check with CARES. C F E P is that way, for example. You can't commence until you've been awarded. So I'll check that, and I'll talk to Tony.
Yeah, I mean, I know he has some latitude there, but he would prefer to have it invoiced and out this fiscal year so that it's catalogued under this year's fiscal plan and operational plan for C F, since they did agree to.
Just a, sorry, just a question I had, I should ask this yesterday when I was talking to you. It might fit under our I C F. You're, we were looking at a grant to do a water study with the county, what's, what's ever happened with that?
Actually, A C P phoned me ten days ago, I think it was just before the last council meeting, if I recall.
Yeah.
We had submitted two A C P grants, one for the water study, one for regional storm water study. They called and asked if they could combine them into one grant, and that it was looking like that they should have that finalized pretty soon.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so they said.
That's something we've been waiting on, so.
They said, being they're both a result of your I C F, we wanna consider them one project, it's easier for us to do them all, and I said, yeah, cause it diminished the amount. And they said, no, we'll still take the sum total of the two.
Okay, good.
Which is how much?
Uh, it'd be a hundred and ten. So I said, yeah, do whatever you gotta do.
Yeah.
Okay, under questions, was I. Under questions, I was approached by Zenas, who is part of the Alliance Club. And they have their AGM coming up pretty soon. I think this Thursday. And I were wondering if a member of council could be there. I can't cut myself in twenty pieces, it's impossible. So I am wondering if there is one of you that would be kind enough to represent a town, considering that they're always helping us getting grants.
Who's this?
It's Alliance.
On Thursday?
On Thursday, six o'clock at the seniors', I believe.
Just, I might be able to go. Let me just check.
We have a meeting, but we might be done by then, but.
I'm out of town.
I got high counts, I'm working for H S.
I could go.
Could you?
Okay.
Okay, so Jill, could, could you maybe call Zenas and let her know that Counselor Brown will represent the town?
It's at what, it's the.
Six o'clock at the seniors'.
On the fifth.
Anything else on priorities, any other questions, businesses arising?
Maybe you want, just give me a chance. Jill, you may want to confirm the, the date and place and let Counselor Brown know. Thank you.
Counselor Brown, you have something else?
Uh, yes, in regards to public safety, just wondering where we're at with a crosswalk at the elementary school. Down from the elementary school. Just making sure.
We budgeted extra for it this year.
Perfect, I just kinda like, you know, we talked about it last year, it didn't get done, still hearing the chirping from people.
Exactly, did we want that at?
He knows where it goes. It's down from the elementary school, it's over by a Letches, it's over by.
South down there.
Exactly.
Seventh Street.
Correct.
Seventh Street and Seventh Ave, right there, yeah, true. Is it six?
You want the tunnel line.
Just down to the middle of a block, so it's back on the end of that block.
That's correct. Just because we have so many kids going through there.
You're talking to Somerfelt, is that block there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I got you.
Just if you could put that back on the radar.
Yes, we have a ton of kids in that neighborhood.
And I'm not done yet. And also, if we can also get the handicap parking up at Redford before, I don't know, baseball, softball, whatever it is that goes on up there happens, that'd be fantastic. I can be out with paint tomorrow, just tell me when.
Button it up there about eight feet tall.
How many spots were we gonna put up there?
Two.
Two? We better have a sign, because it's a gravel parking lot, I don't.
We worked it all out.
Okay, okay.
We got a village, it's, it's, it just needs to get her done.
Correspondence, South Crowe Correspondence, you can read that, that's a meeting going on. Anybody going to that one, South Crowe guy? All the way to Carmengay, all right. Budget analysis, do we wanna hit that one right now, or do you wanna take a break?
We've got some food, if you wanna take a break, can you have something?
Do you wanna finish this, and then? Then we finish this. Then these guys.
Well, I'm just thinking, this budget analysis could take some time, is what I'm thinking.
I'm just wondering where everybody was.
Well, essentially, you need to know what I told you earlier. That's really what you need to know.
Thirty-seven percent.
Once you understand that part, you will see what it represents for us about.
Okay, Counsel, what I'm asking is, do you wanna take some time to go through this, or are we just gonna say it's gonna cost us money?
I think we need to highlight, highlight this, because there's some points that were, that were not brought up to us. And so we discovered them on Friday afternoon when we listened to the webinar.
Take a break. Okay, so Mike, yes.
Thanks, I'm making a motion.
To recess.
Recession, I didn't even say the A. I said, make a motion to recess for fifteen-ish minutes.
Okay, all in favor? I mean, Corey gets to stick around for a little longer.